Healthy Indian family, in a way trying to shed the burden of their own history, comes to a country in which the subject of reinvention of the self is completely central. Everybody does it. People come through Ellis Island and change their names. People move from the Midwest to the big city and try and be new people. And it seemed that appropriate for people from an old country trying to get rid of the shadow of the past to come to somewhere where it's possible to be new.
Is it really possible, though? That's the question that the book seems to keep returning to. Some characters believe it is, others believe it's not. Ultimately, can you escape your past?
Well, I think in a novel, you can't. I think in a novel, if a family arrives in Manhattan, obviously concealing some very dark secret.
The secret will come out.
It's pretty clear that the secret is going to blow up in their face at some point.
Yeah.
In real life, I think people do manage to leave the past behind and start again. You know, I think New York is full of those stories of families, whether Jewish families from Eastern Europe or nowadays immigrants from all over the world, you know, come here and make new lives and seem to do it quite successfully.
But at the same time, as one character in this book puts it, the trouble with trying to escape yourself is that you bring yourself along for the ride.
Yeah. I mean, that is, of course, the tragedy of the novel, that this family, Nero Golden, the patriarch, which of course, not his real name, but the name that he takes, clearly has a lot of luggage. He's somebody who, as we begin to discover as the novel unfolds, had had quite a shady past. And in trying to escape that past, along with his three adult sons, he is guilty, I guess, of a little bit of innocence. You know, he really thinks that by coming to America, he can go beyond the reach of the, well, to put it bluntly, gangsters who might be interested in harming him. But sometimes you underestimate the opposition, you know, and I think he does.
The books that you write have always felt connected to myths and legends. And this story almost feels like a fairy tale. It's very archetypal. There is a sort of king in his castle with three sons. There's a kind of wicked stepmother figure. There's almost a curse on the family. Are these archetypes just part of the water that you swim in, or do you choose one to work with? Is this conscious, or is it automatic?
No, I think it's just the way the stuff comes out. I do have a lot of mythology in my head, both Indian and kind of Greek and Roman, and that tends to spill into the characters quite often. And in this case, obviously, these characters who renamed themselves after characters from ancient Greece and Rome are very aware of their own self-mythmaking. They're trying to create themselves as kind of heroic or even quasi-divine figures. But there's a gap between that self-aggrandizing naming and the reality of their lives.
When you take a step back and observe that the novel you've written does follow an archetype, do you think to yourself, oh, well, how lovely, I'm part of this ancient tradition? Or do you think, oh, well, damn, I'm telling the same story humans have been telling themselves for millennia?
Oh, we all tell each other the same stories all the time. The question is whether you tell the story in a new way.
This is actually the question that I have most wanted to ask you. Your narrator, this filmmaker, at one point asks, why even try to understand the human condition if humanity revealed itself as grotesque, dark, not worth it? How do you answer that question for yourself as a writer?
Well, it's obviously a tough question because it carries with it a sense of despair. And I think at that moment, Renee, looking at America, is very disillusioned with his own country, very disillusioned with the choices it's making and with what's happening in it. And he asks himself, you know, what is it that I'm a part of? And is it worth being a part of? Is it worth writing about? But I think clearly, he himself doesn't fully think that because he ends up making his movie and he ends up, in a way, narrating this novel.
But does that mean that humanity is not grotesque, dark, and not worth it? Or does it just mean that it's worth writing about anyway?
Well, I think it means both things, actually. That even if it were grotesque, dark, and not worth it, it would be worth writing about. But what I, in a way, what the novel tries to present is a world that's not grotesque. I say, a real, I think, credible world, you know, a believable city in a believable time in which real characters, real human beings are having their lives. But then, when you ascend to the level of public life, you find grotesques and cartoons.
And so in writing, do you find that humanity is not dark, that humanity is in fact worth it? Or do you write in spite of the darkness?
I think human beings are the most interesting thing I know about. They're inexhaustibly interesting. And I think one of the great beauties of the novel as a form is that it shows us that human nature is the great constant. Human nature is the same in all places, in all times, in all languages. And that makes it the great subject of any writer's life, just to try and explore this vast ocean of human beings. There's a wonderful line near the end of Saul Bellow's novel, The Adventures of Oggie Marsh, in which he describes himself as a Columbus of the near-at-hand, you know, setting out to explore the terra incognita, he says, the unknown land that spreads out from every gaze, you know. And I think that's sort of what the writer is. He's looking, he's a Columbus of the near-at-hand, you know, we're exploring the world that is not across an ocean, but that is outside our front door.
Salman Rushdie, the new novel is called The Golden House. What a privilege to talk to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Tomorrow morning, a check on how Houston public schools are doing. After Harvey, the first day of school in Houston's district was pushed to next Monday, the 11th. That and much more tomorrow on Morning Edition.
You're listening to All Things Considered from NPR News.
Support for NPR comes from this station and from Bluehost, with tools to create, secure, and host websites. Bluehost is used by more than 2 million small business owners and bloggers to customize an online presence. Learn more at bluehost.com/NPR. From Zoom, Zoom offers cloud video conferencing, online meetings, and a video conference room solution in one platform, featuring digital video and audio with screen sharing, account registration, and more at zoom.us. From CFP, Certified Financial Planner Professionals, committed to providing financial planning in the client's best interest, from taxes and investments to saving for college and planning for retirement. More at letsmakeaplan.org. And from listeners like you who donate to this NPR station.
It's a minute before seven o'clock. I'm Tom Kocain, thanking you for choosing to make Northwest Public Radio's All Things Considered a part of your Tuesday evening. And I do hope the chills stick around because Exploring Music with Bill McLaughlin is coming up next. For Western Washington, smoky conditions with reduced air quality, a red flag warning, and a heat advisory, and then onshore flow will cool things down a bit tomorrow. Lowes tonight, upper 50s to upper 60s, highs tomorrow in the 70s to mid 80s. East of the Cascades winds continue to bring wildfire smoke into the area, but the smoke will keep daytime temperatures cooler than earlier predicted. Lowes tonight mainly in the 60s, highs tomorrow under hazy and smoky conditions in the mid 80s to the lower 90s. Northwest Public Radio, KRFA 91.7 Moscow Pullman, KNWV 90.5 Clark Street.
Everybody, today is September 5, and this is a Moscow City Regular Council meeting. For those of you that braved it out in all this smoke, thank you for being here. It's nasty tonight, so thanks for being here. With that, Catherine?
Let's all rise and say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our power, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral.
Thank you, Catherine. And I will start off with a proclamation recognizing our Moscow Volunteer Fire Department, the 125th Anniversary Proclamation. Whereas, from its inception in 1892, the Moscow Volunteer Fire Department has deep traditions in Moscow's history. And whereas, one of the finest professional volunteer fire departments in the state of Idaho in the Pacific Northwest, the Moscow Volunteer Fire Department has made tremendous strides and many accomplishments. And whereas, the organization has created a legacy in the fire and emergency medical service industry and has developed many partnerships to deliver great customer service for the community. And whereas, the Moscow Volunteer Fire Department has partnered with the city of Moscow for the past 125 years and has remained true to its principles and values of trust, service, and collaboration, while evolving to meet the fire and emergency medical services needs of this community. And whereas, in this 125th year and continuing collaboration among Moscow's Volunteer Fire Department, the city of Moscow, and the University of Idaho continues to provide outstanding opportunities for our citizens' volunteers to give back to the community while providing outstanding value and service to our citizens. Now, therefore, I, Bill Lambert, the mayor of the city of Moscow, do hereby recognize the important role that the Moscow Volunteer Fire Department plays every day in bringing fire and emergency medical services to our homes, schools, businesses, and the outstanding support to the entire community since 1892, and hereby proclaim that the city of Moscow, September 16, 2017, as a day of celebration to the Moscow Volunteer Fire Department's 125th Anniversary. And I see Chief Nickerson out there. I would like to present him and Assistant Chief Joe with the proclamation.
They don't want to get us over here so we can get us. All the smoke outside, it's not quite as bright, Gary.
[laughing]
So reflections is not a...
They want the party, they want to do something about the smoke.
Yep, in the garden.
Where's the smoke? There's party. Get on it.
They're complaining in Spokane that they can't see fires they're called for.
I don't agree with the smoke.
Anywhere too.
Can I applaud you?
Really. Come around the corner, look up the hill. Can't see the hill.
Yeah. 25 years, that's a big deal for us, so pass that on along. Joe's actually on that side. You want me to speak for a few moments?
Mayor and city council, I appreciate the proclamation. It's a big accomplishment and achievement for our fantastic organization. And we encourage everybody to come out and see us on September 16. I know it's during the fair, but also it's being held at Station Two and the rule station over there by the ice rink. So we encourage everybody to come out. We'll have a ceremony at about 11 o'clock in the morning. We'll have some demonstrations and so forth like that. So we encourage everybody to come out and join us in a great day of celebration for our 125 years. So I appreciate it. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, chief. Ladies and gentlemen, I mean, it's kind of a pride because it's a unique thing. 125 years of volunteer fire department is absolutely amazing in this state. And we've got the dedicated men and women to do a wonderful job with that. And I certainly, as a mayor, appreciate all the efforts that all folks on the fire department, the AMAs, thank you again. Okay, with that, we'll move on to item number one, approval of the Moscow City Council August 21 minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the minutes as presented in the amended form that we were presented with tonight and sent earlier today in email.
Second.
Okay.
I understand Mr. Redner has a few things he'd like to say about that.
We got a motion by Jim and a second by Catherine. Gary, you want to add a few comments here?
Thank you, Your Honor. As you know, we use an automated agenda management system, which does have some limitations as far as how motions are presented and dictated. We made some changes on that based on some comments we heard from the community, and so hopefully they read a little better. There were one or two quotes that we went back, made sure that they were verbatim from the comments that council made at the time or presenters. So with that, we believe it presents the most accurate depiction of what occurred at that council meeting on August 21. So that's why you have amended minutes.
Okay, with that, I'll start the roll with Walter.
Aye.
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 Okay, and those amended minutes are passed and approved. One thing to note, there will not be an executive session this evening, so I just wanted to announce that early on. And so we'll move on to item number two, which is mayoral appointments, and there is none. So we will continue on to item number three, public comment. Mayor's response period will last for 15 minutes. And we ask folks to please not speak about anything that's on tonight's agenda, or that's in front of a board adjustment, or planning and zoning. Please state your name and let us know what your concerns are. We'll give you three minutes. Yeah, why don't you announce your name first and get that down, and then we'll go from there, please.
Thank you.
Ebat, thank you.
Becker Gooch. Do you want my address, too? 234 South Roosevelt, Moscow, Idaho.
Okay.
Let me have them. I'll just pass them down for you. It's okay.
Thank you. Oh, wait, did I give you... Oh, no.
Are we good?
I actually am far more verbose than I have time for, so you get all of the comments, and I just kind of filtered mine. Mayor and city council, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak publicly about community safety on our city streets. I would like to echo the many positive recognitions of the addition of four-way stop signs at Mountain View and F Streets, vital in the summer for kids using the Hamilton Low Swim Center, and year-round use of the Rec Center and hub for youth sports and community programs. I think it's a real positive addition. It is also vital for students traveling to Moscow Charter School, Moscow Middle School, and McDonald's Elementary on foot and as bikers, as well as the general public. Drivers are acclimated to the change, and fewer stop sign violations are being observed by people. See, people just zooming through them. People are starting to learn that that's now there. We have some other stop sign suggestions, and I won't go through all of those tonight, but they are on the printed comments I gave to you. It was an honor to interact with students and adults this past week as citizens for livable community took to the streets with crazy dress, reflective vests, and catchy signs reminding motorists that school is back in session. The return to school is always a transition time for bikers, walkers, and motorists. We had 16 volunteers around town at key intersections that have the heaviest student and vehicle movement close to or connected to schools.
Ma'am, could I have you speak more directly into the microphone? We're having some problems, Gary.
Okay. Is that better?
That's great.
Okay. Now, where was I? Let's see. Our unscientific counts revealed few surprises with Lena Whitmore having 249 pedestrians and 69 bikes, and Moscow High School with 575 pedestrians and 76 bikes as citizens moved to school, to work, and also including pockets of runners, exercise walking groups, and moms pushing strollers. The heavy use of Third Street is not a one-and-done thing. It continues throughout the day with small and large groups. On Friday, I observed a large, early-afternoon group of students coming from school activity and stretching two blocks long just west of East City Park. They were talking and laughing with friends and paying little attention to anything around them besides the four cheerleaders leading the pack. This happens all the time. I personally am glad to see these students walking instead of being bussed from place to place. I counted the numbers in this group, 57, including the cheerleaders. I also noted that the new bike lanes and parking restrictions on Third Street seem to confuse some motorists and bikers alike. And I only saw, on the first day of school, two bikers using the bike lane. And I think it's because they're more confused about what the rules are with those new lines than, and that they will adapt as they get to use them more. One thing I did note, that the bike lane abruptly ends at Oak Street. And it's like, if there's a biker and a car side by side, that biker has no place to go except to curb and park car. So there needs to be some kind of a transition there instead of that abrupt end. I feel like we can confidently say there were no incidents of cars or bikes, I mean, bikes and feet meeting car wheels. So we'd like to think that what we did was a little bit of a boost to having drivers watch where they're going and be aware of bikers. There are three statistics worth noticing. Last records available show that Moscow ranked in the top 1% of communities in the nation for bikers. According to statistics provided by the city in a recent grant application, 25.3% of Moscow residents walk or bike to work compared to national average of 3.4%. We are to be proud of that part of our community. According to Walk-Bike Alliance, Idaho pedestrian deaths are up 250%, and there is a serious injury or death involving pedestrians or bikes every three days in Idaho. We need to pay attention to these numbers for our own community. Citizens of livable community continue to advocate for pedestrian crossing at Paradise Creek to further support the safety of walkers, bikers, and handicapped. We also continue and strongly oppose a traffic bridge and Ontario designation on Third, turning community gathering locations into a funnel by continuing Moscow Pullman Highway 8 through the heart of our most unique, envied, and treasured community center.
Catherine, can you wrap it up, please?
Okay, I will come to the end right there. Community input and pass has strongly supported the designation of Collector Street and pedestrian and walking and handicap crossing at Paradise Creek. These same citizens have spoken out and continue to speak out against the traffic bridge. And these are just examples of signs that we managed to wave crazily for the public.
That's great for the first day of school. Get everybody awareness of it, so that's great.
Yeah, and we are going to continue doing this periodically through the year, too, because people tend to lax and not be aware. So we want to continue our efforts to have people be aware.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Seems appropriate that I follow that. My name is Terrence Soul. I'm a resident of 601 East Third Street. This is, in a sense, a continuation of comments I made a year ago when the Third Street Bridge issue first came up in the context of the Tiger Grant. And at the time, I voiced my concerns about safety on Third Street because it seemed like it had a disproportionate number of traffic accidents, according to police reports. I'm a bit of a geek, and I like harder numbers than just an appearance. So I took all of the 2016 police data and basically analyzed it, and so thought this might be of interest to everyone. In the city of Moscow, there were 560 listed traffic accidents over what is 190 miles of streets, which ends up being an average of 2.95 accidents per mile within Moscow. Most of these are, thankfully, non-injury accidents. Along the .9 miles of East Third Street, there were 18 traffic accidents, which means, in contrast to the average for Moscow of 2.95 accidents per mile, along East Third Street, the average is 20 accidents per mile, or about 650% more. So in fact, as you might expect, East Third Street is one of the most traffic accident-prone streets in Moscow, as it is. For context, I also looked at East Sixth Street, which already has a connector at Mountain View, expecting that there'd be even more accidents. And in fact, there are not. East Sixth Street has fewer accidents per mile than East Third Street currently. It's also interesting to note that of the accidents on East Sixth Street, 20% of them are at the Mountain View intersection. So based on that, we can estimate that if we put in a vehicle bridge at East Third Street, we'll see a 20% increase in accidents on East Third Street. So given that this is already one of the most accident-prone streets in Moscow, and given that it runs past several schools, churches, one of our most popular parks, it seems like the city council should consider these figures very carefully as they move ahead. I was also a little surprised because I know that traffic calming measures have been a definite topic of conversation to try and reduce the number of accidents. I was a little surprised to see that the bike lanes were put in. I'm a huge fan of bike lanes, but it turns out that street-side parking is one of the most effective traffic calming techniques, according to any modern study that I could find. And so in fact, by removing that street-side parking, although bike lanes are great, we're actually increasing the speed of traffic and having the opposite of traffic calming. And so I was a little surprised to see those go in. Overall, it would be interesting, I think, to me and to most of the community to know what the overall plan is for Third Street in terms of how many lanes will there be on the bridge, what sort of traffic calming methods will be imposed, and so forth. And so that's, I guess, my final comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Soul.
Well, gosh, we didn't plan this, but this segues very well. I'm Joanne Manita. I live at 203 South Howard. With floods and smoke and fires and nuclear testing, it's hard to concentrate on local issues. But concentrate we must because I understand that the city has started to advertise for a firm to submit their, what do you call it?
RFQs.
Yeah. Which are due by September 22. So by September 29, you want to pick a firm to build the bridge, motor bridge that we're talking about. So that's moving really fast. Gary Redner was kind enough to meet with Amy Ball and myself. We had some questions about where the money was coming from for the motor bridge. And short answer, that you all know, you have a fund that when there's money left over in projects, or refunded, or under budget, you keep it in a pile, in a fund, and that's available to do special projects, like, I guess, like the restroom downtown. And this year, you, the city council and mayor, told Gary and the rest of the people that your priority was this motor bridge.
So was one of them because of safety, Joanne?
Pardon me?
It was one of them because of safety. Go ahead and continue.
For safety?
Yep.
Yeah, that's what we're going to talk about. So anyway, you could have built easily with that money, you could have easily have built a pedestrian bridge. But when we asked Gary about what are the plans for when Third Street goes through to Mountain View, and what are the plans for the streets connecting to Third on the east side of the, on the west side of the bridge, he said he didn't know. And that's okay, but I'm thinking somebody has to know. You don't plan a $580,000 project that's going to influence the center of the residential area without a plan. And now, we've been told, as Terry mentioned, we've been told not to worry, there won't be that much traffic, and there'll be traffic calming. So we want to know, and now we see bike lanes appearing that nobody had heard about before, we want to know what the plans are. I will read just briefly from the city's multimodal transportation plan, Section 4, page 13. It's recommended that the multimodal bridge be accompanied by traffic calming measures on Third Street from the new bridge west to Jefferson Street, and that the proposed traffic calming features and their locations will be determined by a future design and community outreach process. So we, the members of the livable, Citizens for Livable Community, and the parents of students at Lena Whitmore, asking you, the council, to facilitate an immediate community meeting where you tell us what the plans are for traffic calming that we've heard so much about, you get some input from the community, you do the outreach that it's supposed to happen. This is part of a larger plan. Surely, we're not going to use students and bikers for traffic calming. There must be other plans. So please let me know how we're going to proceed on this important community outreach and transparency and communication. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne.
Mayor and council, I'm Mark Seacrest. I'm recently retired from the University of Idaho. A week ago on Monday, I was leaving Walmart, driving down the hill, and noticed there was a young woman with two children, two daughters, standing by her, holding a sign on the corner of Warbonnet...
Warbonnet.
Warbonnet, Mark.
Warbonnet Street and Pullman Highway, which is a corner where people often stand to hold up a sign to get some help. I pulled over to go see if I could help them. At the same time, one of our good police officers, and he was very kind, pulled up in his squad car and walked over just a few seconds before I got to them and told them to leave. And he did it in a nice way. But I wonder why this policy is here in Moscow, Idaho. I don't think that not let, not, I don't understand why... I don't think that not let, not, I don't understand why the city is interfering in its policies with the good citizens of Moscow being able to help people that need help. I have stopped many times there at that corner. As I was there talking to the woman after the officer left, another woman stopped and offered food and offered help. We want to help these people. We are a community of helping people. We are a community of people who help each other and help those that are needy, and certainly the homeless are poor and needy. And I think this policy does not represent our community well. I think it does not represent our values as a community, and I would like to question its application and why we are doing it. It's that simple. Might there be a discussion about this, or does anyone know why this policy is happening?
One of the things, Mr. Seacrest came and seen myself in my office, and Gary was there as well, and this was something, it's not new that we have homeless, because we all know that it's in every community. And I asked Gary, because I know really, do not really know how the ordinance works and all that stuff. So I invited Mark, and he wanted to know if there was a forum that they could speak at, and I said absolutely, in front of our city council, every single time we have a council meeting, we have a period of time that people can get up and tell us what their concerns about various things are. And with that, Gary, you and I had talked, and you were going to be in contact with Chief Frye, so could you tell us a little bit?
I'm sorry, I was out the end of last week, so I did not get that done. I made inquiry, I haven't heard back from him yet. As I indicated to Mark the other day as well, policies like this need to be reviewed periodically. I think, Mayor, you suggested perhaps a visit to the Human Rights Commission might be in order as well. So I will have that information to you, I have Mark's contact information. When I get the exact ordinance and statute, we'll share that with the council and with Mark, and council and Mark can determine where it goes from there.
Absolutely. Did you have a comment, Walter?
Gary, we have as close as possible the exact date and time this occurred, so y'all can back into it.
Yes.
Okay.
This is, and I'd like to point out, this is a new policy. This has not been happening, to my knowledge, up until about the time that I saw it happen, because I check it nearly all the time. Every time I walk, every time I leave Walmart, I notice that corner.
Well, one of these.
So this is a new, this is a new policy.
Yeah, and we're not certain whether it's a state policy or what, and that's what we're investigating. Mark, get back to you.
Right.
As well as others in the community.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we have went over our 15 minutes, so I'm going to go ahead and move on to our, the rest of our agenda, folks. And it will be item number four, which is Citizens' Commission Report, Farmers Market Commission, Jen Pithner and Erin Carroll. Hi, Jen.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'll get our presentation pulled up here shortly, get everything woken up here. And I'd like to introduce Erin Carroll. She's our Farmers Market Commission Chair. She's been with the commission since it began, and she'll be giving a brief overview of what the market's been up to. Luckily, you've seen a few things recently from the market. And give me one more second.
I'm really glad you're tired, Jen.
Yeah. It's funny when you're not in front of your computer. Oh, is it? Okay. I did it the hard way. That's very good.
That's one concluding file structure.
There we go. Thank you. Thank you, mayor, council members, for receiving this report this evening. Like Jen said, my name is Erin Carroll, and I'm currently serving as the chair of the Moscow Farmers Market Commission. None of this should be a surprise, because I feel like I've been up here a little bit more in the last year. We've been doing some very hard work and working within some city structures for our strategic plans, so that's a lot of this report today, is just kind of updating you on that process and receiving any feedback that you might have for the commission's work. So a few highlights here are just so you know what's happening in our 2017 Farmers Market. Jen and I actually discussed today how it might be better to do this report at the end of the market season, so we can give you a nice, comprehensive view. So maybe next year we'll do that, because these mid-season reports are a little hectic. But if you're not aware, the market staff puts out a newsletter every week with updates of vendor changes, vendor highlights, what's happening in the market, and anything that might be helpful for our patrons and our vendors. Those are located on social media and handed out to each of the vendors. We also have COWS, which is the College of, oh, Animal and Life Sciences?
Ag and Life Sciences.
What's that?
College of Ag.
Ag and Life Sciences, Animal and Life Sciences. I tell you, between U of I and WSU, all my acronyms get messed up. But they've been coming in and doing Summer of Science and doing some wonderful educational displays, especially for families that attend the market and children. And every time I go, those students, or the children are just full in that booth, looking at sugar and bugs and all sorts of oddities. We still have a lot of participation from the UI Chess Club, which is nice, and there's many things that come to the market that aren't included on here. Here are just a few highlights. We're still honoring many benefits, including the SNAP and EBT, WIC, and the SFMNP. That one you might be less familiar with, is the Senior Assistance Nutrition Program. And I think Jen tried to trip me up with a video in here to show you of, oh, backwards mouse, about our benefits that Zach Ellis put together. So if you don't mind, I'd like to play that for you. Is that all right?
Yeah, go ahead. Yes, please.
Yeah, I'm just going to go ahead and make this decision on a city computer, no problem. You're fine.
Well, you're doing great.
Download away. Just download away, I'm sure it's safe. It's fine.
Maybe not.
We're messing with Chris.
You might find that on the desktop as well. I put it there earlier.
Oh. Oh, well, it is playing, just.
Oh, here we go.
We have no sound.
I think Chris will turn that up for us here.
Okay, I'll go ahead and start it back.
Worked great at my desk.
Jen, you're going to have to do the voiceover for us. Are you ready? No, kidding.
I can read that fast.
Do we have sound that anyone can help us with?
Well, there's another little thingy at the very bottom of the screen on the right.
Yeah. Working on it. Awesome. When we get the go-ahead, I'll start that again.
There we go. Repetition is education.
Yeah. Nothing if not flexible, I tell you what.
It's a good thing I couldn't give it the first time through anyway, Erin, so.
Right. So while they're figuring that out, we'll go through the rest of these. There was also a pup-friendly campaign. Dogs in the market is certainly a passionate topic, and we wanted to encourage people to write appropriate dogs that are allowed in our market, which are service animals. So there was a really adorable campaign that our market manager worked to get, put together, to show what types of service animals are allowed in our market, and what that does for our market, to keep it safe for everyone to attend. We've seen record attendance this year with nearing 8,000 people a day, which is amazing to bring that down to our downtown area. Many musical performances, as you're probably aware of. Certainly, we're all aware of the benefit of the downtown restrooms that that provides for the farmers market and all events that are held on Main Street. We've had chef demonstrations at the market, which promotes our local food sourcing. Those chefs are not only teaching people how to use nutritious foods, but where to buy them within the market, so hopefully connecting people to their farmers. Certainly, our social media presence continues to grow, and our market staff has done a phenomenal job of keeping that running. And amongst all these highlights, there's certainly a low light that we are losing our Americor position, or not the position, but the person filling that position, Jessica, unfortunately, will be leaving that position and looking to fill that here as soon as possible. I'm going to try this video again. If it burns me a second time, we're going to call it. The Moscow Farmers Market was the first market in the state of Idaho to welcome food stamps. Now, through Backyard Harvest, it's easier than ever to use your food stamps to purchase fresh, local fruits and vegetables. Step one, go to the Backyard Harvest tent next to the City of Moscow tent in Friendship Square. Step two, swipe your SNAP/EBT card. Step three, for every $5 in SNAP that you spend, you'll receive an extra $2 in Fresh Bucks. Step four, shop the market for eggs, cheese, berries, honey, and more, then get 40 percent more fruits and vegetables with your Fresh Bucks. So a great promo video that was put together that also highlights our phenomenal partnership with Backyard Harvest and trying to increase nutritional foods to those who may not have access to it otherwise, and of course, shopping locally with those dollars. So a few of the highlights. In the past year, I'd say one of the biggest accomplishments of the Farmers Market Commission is completing the strategic plan that you all helped, helped us adopt and supported. So the rest of this report is really focused in what that strategic plan looks like, what we have been accomplishing within that plan, and where we're going with each of those goals and objectives. And if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them along the way, or happy to pull Jen back up here so she can answer them for you. Our strategic planning update, so one of our goals within that was to clarify our operational expectations, and this is a lot of jargon pulled straight from our strategic plan, but really, this was about getting us poised in a position that we can best operate the market, getting a full-time market manager instead of our seasonal market manager, so the email address didn't go cold for three months of the year when vendors were really looking for information about our market. So now we have year-round coverage to help support and grow our market as the demands continue to increase. Certainly, the strategic planning process was a big part of this, of understanding what our expectations, the expectations of the commission, of citizens, of vendors, and all the stakeholders involved. Our future work includes looking at volunteer procedures, so how we get volunteers in the market more consistently to help with that burden on staff, and really, how we are better communicating amongst our stakeholders. So what is the role of city staff, the market manager, other supports, volunteers, and the commission included, and clarifying the purpose of each of those groups along the The second phase of our strategic planning process was really looking at the policies and the, looking at a lack of clarity in our policies. Our policy manual, as it was, is the result of a lot of minor tweaks over 30-plus years. So you take a market that was a grassroots, small organization, and grow that over many, many years, move it to different locations, add so many vendors and opportunities, and we found that the policies no longer fit necessarily all of our needs. And so a big part of our strategic planning was really clarifying the who, what, where, when, how, why. How are people involved with our market? When can they get involved with our market? Under what category? What makes an agricultural vendor versus a produce vendor? What is local? You've heard a lot of these arguments, discussions, and quandaries along the way. So our goal here is to build consistent timelines and process and transparency. We've updated policies for this current season that we're in now, and now we're moving towards looking at the 2018 season, and specifically looking at the fee structure and what impact that might have on the process. We're also looking at the juriing process, which is something that council has also charged the commission with, so how are we juriing our vendors? We currently have a jury process, but reviewing that to make sure that it upholds the values and the mission of the market, as well as keeps our vendor profile robust.
My question has to do with the businesses that are downtown, and I just, curious was about, curious about their feedback into the market, because I haven't heard from a lot, but several people have said that their business is impacted during that time of the market, so I just wondered how you all were addressing that.
It's been a while since the commission has had direct feedback from businesses. We get it occasionally, and the reviews are generally more positive than negative. There's a few businesses that have mentioned negative impact, but overwhelmingly, it's been positive. Just today, we do have Jenny Ford, who is now serving on our commission, and we talked with her about doing another survey with chamber and business members to get clearer feedback, because that is part of our strategic plan, is to engage the businesses downtown and more of that planning and operations process. And that's certainly something we take into consideration as we talk about layout. And today, we talked about pass-throughs and where those are strategically located in front of businesses. Vendor of the Week exists in the market, do we have a downtown business of the week? And so those are kind of integrated throughout all of our work, especially integrated in the strategic plan. Does that answer your question?
That totally answers my question. Thank you.
Included in this is policies around everything, so vendor types, boundaries. This is really just trying to clarify why. We've noticed a lot of holes in our policies of where did this come from, and maybe it lived in this person's brain for a long time, but we want to make sure that anybody who reads our policies understands clearly how and when they're able to participate in the market, and maybe why they aren't able to participate in the market, and what changes they could make to do so. I'll try not to take too much time. And then allocation and distribution of market costs. You've seen a lot of work on this. We just approved the fee structure for next year. That was a huge accomplishment for us to better understand the revenue sources that are coming into the market, and make sure that it's equitable across all of our vendor types, to try and make that more realistic to what our market is now versus the, when those original fees were set. It probably worked for the makeup of that market, but it no longer did now. So we've made big strides on that. Moving forward, we want to evaluate the effects of the change that we just made, because that's a pretty big change for our market, and then consider a multi-year plan, so vendors can see what's coming in their business models, and not be surprised by any fee increases or changes moving forward. And immediate and severe infrastructure needs. So this is really regarding the patron and vendor experience. We're doing a bit of a needs assessment on what that looks like, everything from power and parking to benches and shade, making sure people have access to the market and that vendors have access to what they need to be effective in the market. So a lot to be done on that. We're focusing on policies and fees first. And again, more on layout. This was especially involving downtown businesses, accessibility, ease of use, and that experience in the market. You know, how long is too long, how wide is too wide, and really, that time spent in the market, and how, how desirable is, is spending time in the market? Are you in and out? Or you want to stay there all day? And how do people feel when they come? Are there impediments to getting into the market that we need to address? So that being said, here's a small plug also, that we have the American Farmland Trust Farmers Market Celebration. You can vote for our farmers market at farmers.farmland.org to be the best. We usually score very well, but that's because we are amazing. And I also plug that we currently have an empty seat on our commission for a community member, so all of you listening tonight, if this is something you would like to be involved in helping keep our market great, please apply for that seat, and I'm happy to answer any questions that I can.
Erin, thank you for that great report, and I got to say, you know, getting some Saturdays where we have 8,000 people downtown is huge for us. On August the 19th, I spent that day, it was a Saturday, I spent that morning up on campus with incoming freshmen, they're staying in our dorms, and handed out T-shirts, and then one of the, and there was a number of different groups, 27 of them that went all over town, and sync stands for servicing your new community, servicing that you can possibly do. Anyway, we had 13 kids, freshmen, and I got a chance to lead them on the charge for the farmers market. And the leader of the pack, who I knew, I haven't known for a while, her name was Dami, a really nice young lady. Anyway, so I always ask these kids questions, because I like to fight out where they're from, and you know, what they're thinking and what they're doing, and half of them were girls and half of them were boys, young men and women. And seven of them were from Boise, which I love, anytime we can get somebody from Boise here. And I, so I always give them a spill about being a vandal, and how important it is to be here in Moscow for four years going to school. And even more important, when I go back to Boise to drive everybody down, they're nuts about coming to school at our fine university. But anyway, I took them on the march, I was giving them some history of our town, and on the way down, I asked them if they knew the numbers they had before we got around the corner on Sixth Street and Main, asked if they had any idea how many people came to our farmers market on a Saturday. And the highest number I got was 500. And I said, you kids are dreamers. And we walked around the corners about 10:30, and I waited them right through, and you could barely get through, and so we got halfway through, and I said, does anybody want to take another guess? Because we probably had 500 right at that moment, and so it was kind of a fun thing to do, Erin. But what about, comments and questions for Erin?
Walter?
Thank you. Farmers Market is an awesome thing for the city of Moscow. I had a couple of experiences on Saturday, which recur when I go down there. One, I see a lot of people that I know from Pullman.
I know.
I see people that I knew 25 years ago when I lived in Lewiston. My wife visited with a mother of one of her 50-year-old daughter's classmates to learn what's your child doing now, at the Moscow Farmers Market next to the water fountain, of all things. So it's a wonderful thing. I had a man in a Montana shirt, was over here for a football game, and he was blown away. He says, this is the most awesome thing I've seen. So we're making, you know... So we're making, you know, really big impact on people. We're bringing people into town. I welcome all those cougars to Moscow. The one thing that I would really like to see would be more U of I paraphernalia in the market. I think the cougars are outdoing us a little bit. So, you know, not necessarily on game day, but you know, U of I shirts and hats like the mayor wears, and you know, let's, you know, really dress it up a little bit, but it's a great, great event.
Yeah, see if we can get some vandal pride in the market.
Good job.
Absolutely.
I will say, since we're adding some good anecdote to that, we spent one Saturday at the commission tent, and I was begging for constructive feedback. "What do you want to see? What can we do? I'm here to serve you," and my name tag, and was so excited. And the most constructive feedback I got was "Best market in the world." I'm back as an alum. I graduated 13 years ago, and I love this market. It's my favorite market. A man came in from Genesee, and I walked him around to four booths to find all of the items that he needed, and he said he will be back every Saturday, because he can't find these in his community. And it was, I think, the most constructive feedback that I got was more educational events for children, which is something that we're constantly trying to find and getting grants for. So if that's the most constructive feedback we're getting, then I think we're doing a good job. And I want to say, thank you for your thanks for me, but city staff has been amazing, and Daniel's not here, and Kathleen passing the baton, and Jen has been incredible in this strategic planning process. So they deserve so much recognition for that work, and I hope that they receive that, too.
Our Saturday mornings are a social event in Moscow, Idaho, every single Saturday. That's a big deal. Yes, there's a lot of business that transpires, but there's a lot of good stuff that happens, just like what Walter mentioned. And when I come down, I always spend time talking about all kinds of stuff. It's a fun, fun thing, so you guys do a great job. Thank you. Other comments for Aaron?
I think you're going to have less trouble finding members for the commission now that the strategic planning process is finished.
We lost a few, we lost some good people along the way, I'm not going to lie.
If you're going to be on this commission, you're going to spend a lot of time working on this.
We lost some good, good men and women along the way, but we got it done.
People want to join a winning team, and you know, once you've already got some victories under your belt, then.
That's okay, we'll take it. Now that we've got a plan, we need more people to help us implement it, so.
Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you all.
Okay, with that, we will move on to item number five, which is Palouse Basin Aquifer Committee Alternative Water Supply Study Report. Tyler Palmer, you have the podium, sir.
All right. Give me just a minute, and I will up a wonderful presentation here. All right, I really appreciate the opportunity to take a minute, Mayor, Council, to be here. I think I probably give the impression every time I'm before you, that the thing that I'm bringing is the most important thing that we could possibly be talking about.
At the moment, it is, sir.
This time, I really don't think that's hyperbole. I think that, if you allow me to wax philosophical a bit, if you look at the pattern of human settlement, and distill down to its essence, why we live where we live, it inevitably boils down to the availability of fresh water. That's what you'll always find, no matter if you're looking at Rome, or you're looking at Seattle, or you're looking at Hong Kong, or Los Angeles, it always boils down to the availability of fresh water. That's why people settled there, that's why people stay there. And here on the Palouse, we're not the exception. Anybody who has looked at our water history, and several councillors have, through their participation in PIBAC, we have three councillors here that have served there since I've been on there. We have Councilman Steve Betke and Councilor Trusio, who all help with PIBAC and have an understanding of the challenges that we face with water. You know, when this area started being settled, there were wells here, Artesian wells, that just came out of the ground, lots and lots and lots of water just boiling out of the ground. Our water all comes from aquifers, aquifers that are deep in the ground that we pump from, and we're really lucky to have this resource. But we've known for a long time that the resource is diminishing. Our water levels have been decreasing for a long time, really, since the 1890s, when we started tracking it. So there's been an effort to find a solution for this problem. One of the things that I love about local government is we're forced to be very practical. We have to solve real-world problems. And if there's one charge that I think local government, the most critical charge we have is the delivery of fresh water. Without that, none of the rest of it matters. It's the most fundamental thing that we have to do. And so, I'm here representing the Palouse Basin Aquifer Committee. I serve as chair on that committee this year. Honored to have with us several members of that committee, including our council. We have Les McDonald, who sits with me on that committee from the city. We also have Dan Costello with Washington State University, Weaver State was where I did my undergrad. Dan's with us from Washington State University, and Dan is the vice chair this year, and we also have Kevin Guards, the Public Works Director for the city of Pullman, and Kevin's our past chair for PIBAC, and really appreciate their support. One of the really inspiring things about PIBAC is it's truly a joint effort. We share a basin, and basins don't respect state boundaries, they don't respect city borders, it's just where the water's at geographically, and it's what we have to deal with. And you know, you hear a lot about water conflict throughout the world, a lot right now about water conflict, and our area is truly developing into a model for the rest of the country for how to work cooperatively. I've been so impressed to sit in a meeting, talking about water, something to be very contentious with the different entities that are involved. You see the list here, PIBAC was formed in 1967, because we knew the groundwater was declining, and so the entities that are involved, we have Pullman-Washington, Moscow-Idaho, obviously, Whitman County, Leittah County, both of the universities, and we all work together to try and find a solution to this most critical of problems. And today, I'm really happy to be here, because we have been working on an alternative water supply study. This is something that's really critical. This is a map that shows the outline of the current basin boundaries. This is something that's being refined as we speak, through a study that's taking place with PIBAC. It's always, our basin's an interesting basin, and it's one that's required several decades of study to try and define. And so, this boundary is the current boundary that we're working with, and we're working to refine it. It may adjust as we gather more information. As I mentioned, these are the participating members. We recently hired a new executive manager, Corey Woodley, who I know some of you have met. Many of you are familiar with Steve Robichon. Corey's been great, very energetic, and we're happy to have her. Steve has stayed on and been gracious enough to help us in a technical advisor role. He's a wealth of knowledge. He's just been working on this stuff for a long, long time, and we're happy and lucky to still have him around and helping us out. This is how PIBAC is funded. PIBAC is, we fund the administrative portion of PIBAC, the city of Pullman, city of Moscow, Washington State, and the University of Idaho, all contribute equally. Whitman and Lake Taht County, a lower amount, and then the city of Palouse has traditionally, even though they're not a member of PIBAC, they have donated money to help PIBAC along, because they recognize the critical nature of the work that we do. And then the research funding. I mentioned how much research has been done on a difficult-to-find basin. PIBAC has done a really good job leveraging these dollars with grants in order to gather the information that helped inform this study that I'll be talking with you about tonight. There was a groundwater management plan that was established in 1992, and this was in recognition that we have to do something. We need to set some clear goals, and we need to work toward a long-term solution for our water challenges. In 1992, we had pumped 2.7 billion gallons of water that year, and what was determined in that groundwater management plan, we don't have to read this whole paragraph, I promise, but there was a goal set that capped consumption at 125% of the 1981 to 1985 average, and capping increases in aquifer pumping at not more than 1% per year. And with that, the hope was that the basin would then, that the aquifer would stabilize within about 20 years. This graph here kind of shows the pumping. We've had some successes. The groundwater management plan has been effective. There have been a lot of efforts that have taken place since 1967, and you can see here that we pumped less water in 2016 than we did in 1992, and that's despite a 25% increase in population since 1992. And so, what that tells us is that despite the area growing, we're doing a decent job at curbing our water use. That being said, we're still increasing, and we're still seeing a decline in the aquifer. And so, we have not stabilized the aquifer, which means despite the good efforts, we've got more work to do. Just as a point of reference, we've seen a 22-foot decline since 1992 in the aquifer. Prior, for a long time, the aquifer was declining at about a foot per year, and more recently, we see numbers that seem to indicate more like .6 feet per year, rather than the .9 that we had been seeing. So that's positive, that's a positive thing, but as long as it's still declining, it means we've got work to do. This is one of Steve Robichon's graphs, he always has really entertaining graphs at the Water Summit, and this shows where the water level was in 1890 versus where the water level now in 2016. This chart shows that historic decline, and you can see that we've started to flatten out, not see such a rapid decline as was seen in the past. This breaks down the pumping by entity. These are the 2016 numbers, these are the millions of gallons pumped, and it just breaks down the percentage of the total gallons pumped in 2016. There are some pretty interesting things to note on this, and the following slide. You'll see here that we've seen a significant decrease since 1992 in the U of I domestic, in Palouse, and at Washington State University, and while we've seen a little bit of an increase in Moscow and Pullman. A lot of these numbers can be explained by the nature of the communities. As the communities grow, we'll see more people living in the cities themselves, and the amount of use doesn't necessarily correlate to how much is used at the universities. Palouse had some system upgrades that they needed to make that significantly helped with their water consumption. And a big one for the U of I domestic, as many of you will be aware, is the reuse system, the cooperative effort between the city of Moscow and the University of Idaho that allows for the effluent from our water reclamation reuse facility to be used to water green spaces, including the golf course at the University of Idaho, which saves us millions and millions and millions of gallons of water. So, that brings us to the study. So this study outlines, so we had a, we set a 50-year water demand projection. The 50-year projection, you know, we don't want to make a plan for five years, because with the scale of the projects that we're looking for, with the scale of the things that we have to do to try and address this, these aren't cheap, they're not easy to deal with, and so we want to set a horizon that we think is a good target horizon. And so, 50 years was used for this study, and there are some assumptions plugged into this, into the study parameters. A 1% population increase. One of the things that I do want to emphasize that we continually get asked is conservation, and how big a piece is conservation? And conservation is huge. I mean, we really emphasize it. Both universities, the city of Pullman has a great conservation program, the city of Moscow has a very robust conservation program, and conservation is built in. There's a conservation assumption, an aggressive conservation consumption, or assumption built into this plan, but the fact of the matter is, we can't conserve our way out of our water problem. We have to deal with it on the supply side as well. And so, I don't want to minimize how important conservation is, but I do think it's important that we realize that we do have to start looking for alternative supplies. One of the other things that I will mention that's included in this, it does include aquifer stabilization. And so, there's an amount of water that we assume that we need at this 50-year horizon, and I'm going to try and simplify it, but there are a lot of components that go into that assumption about, okay, how much water are we actually going to need? And the one that I do just want to point out is that aquifer stabilization. And what that means is, how much water would it take for the aquifer to cease to decline? And so, that number is plugged in there. It's an assumption, but when we break it down to a simple level, about one-third of the water that we use is used outdoors. It's used for outdoor irrigation, washing of cars, et cetera. And you'll see that seasonally, and so obviously, we don't see those uses during the wintertime. And we can look at what, how the aquifers behave when that water is not being pulled from the aquifers, and we can look at whether we see recharge, or how the aquifers behave. And so, a history of data showing that seasonal drawdown leads us to believe that somewhere around that number, that third of the amount, that one-third of the water that we are using outdoors, would probably be a pretty good bet for what it would take to stabilize our aquifers. I don't know if that makes sense, it's pretty simplified, but.
Well, why don't we let Tyler finish his comments here?
Certainly, Mayor.
Because there's a bunch of some questions I've got for him as well.
So, what this, as I mentioned, PIBAC was formed in 67. There's been multiple attempts to deal with water issues and to look at other sources, and as a result, we have a lot of studies, and we have a lot of great information. And so, we started this project with the 40-plus studies that had been generated related to water and our aquifer, and we looked at all of the potential solutions that had been proposed, and then we applied a two-step screening evaluation. And so, we could kind of do like a high-level screening for the ones that we knew were just no longer feasible. It might be for ecological reasons, it might be for legal reasons. There were some of them that we just knew weren't going to make it, and we were left, of the 42 that were additionally identified, we were left with about 15 that we could work with, that we could say, "These are potentially feasible alternatives that we can look at to try and determine how we package these together and how we try and meet that 50-year demand horizon." So we had a multi-criteria evaluation of those. We use quantitative and qualitative issues, which we have to do. If you look at the failures of some of the previous efforts to deal with our water supply issue, a lot of times where they failed is that we had a group of very smart people in a room, working on a solution, looking purely at a quantitative, here's the water, here's the supply, perhaps we can do this, without really looking at a lot of the qualitative side of it, and without soliciting enough public input. Without, I mean, water is a human issue, and so the humans that are involved in that issue need to be involved in the solution. And so, you know, a robust public outreach and bringing those people in is really important. And so, that's why we thought it was very important right from the get-go, to make sure that we were looking at some of those qualitative things. One of the, a couple of things I'd really like to point out that I think are interesting is that we did look at greenhouse gas emissions associated with the life cycle cost of these alternatives, and we also looked at criteria air contaminant emissions. And so, those are two things that we just were considering as we look at what the real cost of these potential solutions to our problem will be. And then there were qualitative things, things like, you know, water quality impacts, water right complexity. It's a complex issue, anyway, because we're dealing with city borders, state borders, universities, different entities. It's a very complex problem. And so, these are all things that we have to look at, and public acceptance. Will the public acceptance be of a potential solution? There are certain things that the public is comfortable with in some areas, and they're not comfortable with in other areas, and so that's something that we took into account as well. In the end, what we ended up doing is packaging, being able to package the alternatives into four alternatives that we thought were the most logical packaging of the various alternatives. And so, they include alternative one, which is a Snake River diversion. This is something that has been proposed in the past. You know, it involves pumping water out of the Snake River and piping it into Moscow-Pullman. Alternative two, we have the North Fork of the Palouse River being diverted and piped to Moscow-Pullman, Paradise Creek or South Fork of the Palouse for aquifer recharge in Moscow. Number three is one that the city of Moscow actually did a little bit of work on not too long ago, which is the Flanagan Creek Storage, which would, you know, entail a reservoir on Flanagan Creek that Moscow would then take water from. And then, conveyance to treatment for Moscow and U of I, and South Fork diversion for Pullman and Washington State University. And the fourth alternative was a Paradise Creek aquifer recharge for Moscow, South Fork aquifer storage and recharge for Pullman, Pullman water reuse and groundwater recharge. These will be available in a lot more detail, so I'm not going to dive into a ton of detail on every one of these options and what they all mean, and there are a lot better people to answer questions about that, and a lot of them in this room than I'm going to be able to. But each of these has some advantages and disadvantages as we look through. We ran through the evaluation. Our goal as a committee is, we wanted to take a very complex problem, take the information that had been gathered, a lot of great information, and try to package it in a palatable way so that it's understandable. And so, we tried to get rid of a lot of the clutter, and make it as clear as possible so that we can then take this to the community and say, "Here's our problem, here's the options." You know, here's a suite of options, what do you think? How do we go about this? And so, that's really what we've tried to do here with the packages. And so that's really what we've tried to do here with the packages. The evaluation results seem to indicate that 2 and 4 have a better value based on, than the others, based on the life cycle cost and lower cycle cost per million gallons and potentially lower environmental impacts. The problem with 2 and 4 is that neither really consistently produces sufficient water to meet the demand. I should temper that statement a little bit in that, you know, the demand forecast is an estimate. It could be a very conservative estimate. And so, you know, there is the possibility that that would, but with the number that we established, it doesn't quite get there. So Alternative 2 seems to be a good alternative. Alternative 3 costs more than Alternative 2 and 4, but it can largely meet the demand over the 40-year horizon. Alternative 1 is costly, especially upfront. Some of these can be phased. And so when we look at the costs, you know, some of the costs are pretty high. These are estimates that have been generated, so, you know, these aren't hard numbers. But as an estimate, we're really in this $60 to $90 million for each one of these alternatives, ranging from about $60 million for Alternative 2 up to $86 million for Alternative 3. So that's the range of cost. And like I said, some of these, most of these can be phased. Really, Alternative 1 is the one that would be the most difficult to phase because you're pumping from the Snake River, you set it up one time, you get it up, you get it here. It's kind of a one-shot deal. So the next steps for the Palouse Basin Aquifer Committee is really public involvement and feedback. That is our number-one priority. We want to know what people think. We recognize that this is going to be an enormous investment for this community, for our communities, an enormous investment for the basin, and we want to know where people want that investment to be. And we want them to be part of the solution and help them understand, one, the nature of the problem, help them understand the work that PIBAC's been doing for the last several decades to try and solve the problem, and present them with the alternatives and get some feedback. If it's not a community decision, it just won't fly, and we need this to be. This is one of those band-together times. This is one of those that, PIBAC is such an amazing organization because we will band together as human beings who need to drink water and try and get this thing solved. So that's really the first and most critical next step, is that public outreach. And we're going to continue evaluating each alternative in combinations of alternatives. There are gaps. You know, we've identified these major things, but there are still a lot of data gaps that we can fill in to further refine costs and even feasibility. And so a lot of that is, you know, talking to regulatory agencies, looking at water rights, doing some preliminary engineering, taking a look and trying to refine data on the aquifer a little bit better, identifying points for potential ASR. You know, there's just a lot of data that we can fill in. And that's one of the great things about the research money that PIBAC has, is that we can use some of those funds to start filling in these gaps and understanding. Because as we go out and talk to the public, there's going to be questions, probably questions we haven't even thought of. And so it gives us the ability to go out and then try and fill some of that data gap. So that's really what we've been up to. We're really working right now to update our communications and outreach strategy. And so we're generating a new website. You know, Cory, our executive director, she's just great, you know, and she really has a great communication background. And so we're trying to make a complicated issue understandable. And that's really our goal with our outreach. And so we're working on some branding, on a good communication plan and public involvement. And that's, we're going to be in the middle of that. And this is our first step in that process, is coming to city councils. We're going to be going to as many of these meetings as we can identify and going out and just talking to people so that they know that this is coming and then really trying to do a robust rollout so that it won't be the case as I think it currently is, that you'd probably talk to at least seven out of 10 people and say, tell me where your water comes from. And they'd shrug their shoulders and they'd say, the tap. And that's something that we need to remedy. We need to make sure that people know where it's coming from, where it's going, and how critical it is. And with that, I'd stand for, actually, if you don't mind, Mayor.
I got a couple of questions for you that might very well serve with Mark. We got a Water Summit on the 19th of October over at Switzer Engineering.
That's right, yes.
One of the biggest things, it's not going to be just about our community, it's about the entire Palouse. So it's going to be Moscow and Pullman, the two universities, Palouse, Colfax, there's going to be a bunch of us involved. We all know that we need an alternate water supply. That is, I mean, man, we have beat the horse to death for 30 years talking about this. Now we need to go move forward with some kind of an action plan, and it's going to cost money. So we need, in my view, we need to move forward. I'm guessing this same information we're going to see on the 19th of October with Switzer.
Yeah, we are going to introduce.
Who's leading the charge on that?
We are going to introduce this at the Water Summit. Cory Woodley will be discussing this at the Water Summit, so we'll introduce this. If you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, if you'd let me, I'd like to invite Kevin up just to say a few words to the council.
Come on up, Kevin. I know who Kevin is and a bunch of us, but introduce yourself and your title from Pullman, Kevin.
I'm Kevin Gardis, Public Works Director in Pullman. And good evening, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to say a few words. First of all, great presentation, Tyler, and thank you for the invite. And I want to thank the city of Moscow and the council for its continued support of PIBAC and finding a regional solution. It really is going to take all of us working together to make this happen. This is pretty complicated. These are large-dollar projects. But I think we really do have the expertise to pull this off. And so I just, you know, briefly wanted to tell you as Pullman's representative to PIBAC that we're all in this together, and I want to thank you again for your support.
Thank you, Kevin. You know, one of the things that I thought of, the city of Houston where that Hurricane Harvey nailed them, and they had 25 trillion gallons of water dumped on that city. That's an absolute, incomprehensible thing to think about. In one city, they got well over 50 inches in one storm surge. I was thinking to myself, man, we had a big hole drilled in the ground. Not only could we fill up the aquifer, but to give you an idea of how much water that is, that would service New York City for 50 years. Think about that. So, it's an amazing thing. And so, now, look, if that's not going to happen in Moscow, Idaho, if we got 50 inches of rain, god, everything would be washed away and would be rock or something. But anyway, we got to get with the program on this, there's no doubt about it.
Excellent.
We had a question from Mark. Mark, you had a...
Mark, can you do a...
Mark, come on up to the mic.
To the mic, please.
Because we're on TV, Mark. Come up to the mic, and you'll have to introduce your name again, and so folks out on TV that'll see you and know who the handsome cuss is talking here.
Oh, I didn't realize that was happening. Well, I'm Mark Seacrest. I just retired from the UI a couple of months ago. I had a very simple question. What kind of effect does an extraordinary snowfall have? Because I was hoping, well, you know, it's going to help the aquifer. To what percent would that heavy snowfall perhaps increase the aquifer, if at all?
Well, we have two of them, two aquifers, so...
I can address that, and then if I don't do it in enough detail, I'll ask Kevin or Les to help because I'm sure they can do more. But our aquifer, one of the challenges is the nature of the geology here. We have very thick clay layers associated with the basalt. And so recharge is slow. It takes a long time for water to migrate through our soils. You know, there are some areas, like, for example, up in the Quarter Lane area where there's a lot of gravel, and so it's almost immediate. You know, it can get down there really quick. We have a very, very slow migration of water. So it's critical that we get snow packs and that it sits there and it slowly, slowly, slowly permeates through the soil. But for us, one big snow year isn't going to have the direct and immediate impact because of the migration times and the amount that we see that just sheeps off with the clays. Les, do you have anything you want to add to that?
One thing I would suggest for anybody out there is that this Water Summit is going to be October 19th. Come to it. And there's, boy, there's some excellent presentations for folks out there that haven't been to it. That'd be a good one for you to go to, Mark. I highly recommend it.
We've got some really exciting things for the summit this year. The city of Pullman and the city of Moscow have been working together.
Keynote speaker.
On a white guidebook that we're going to have introduced. We're going to be talking about some of the joint efforts on conservation. It's going to be an exciting year for the summit.
And it will be at SCL over in Pullman, starting at 4:00 PM, I think?
4:00 PM, yep.
Tuesday, Sunday evening thing. Well, other questions for...
I have a couple of questions.
Okay, Jim.
Tyler, maybe he knows the answer. If, on Alternative 1, where we're talking about pumping out of the Snake River, and the adjudication for water rights has been done on the Snake River Basin, how do we acquire water rights to take however much water we want out of the Snake River without penalizing someone that will sue us and make a water call on it in Washington or somewhere along the Columbia?
Without being a water attorney, that is one of the things that has to be looked at. The Snake River adjudication that took place was in southeast Idaho, if I'm not mistaken.
Right, but it covers the entire Snake River Basin.
But there's been a preliminary look, I believe, at potential availability of water rights that leads us to believe that there may be a way to take care of that. But that's probably something that maybe Les can cover in better detail.
If I may, yeah, the Snake River Basin adjudication, as many know, was a 20, 25-year process. Snake River covers, I think it's roughly 65, 70% of the state. And so it did reach all the way up to just south of us. The, part of the concepts we're looking at here with a lot of these alternatives that Tyler mentioned are looking at peak flow times in the year. So when we're talking about diversions out of the North Fork or the Snake River or even the Palouse River, South Fork, we're really looking at those times of the year when we're seeing a lot of runoff from the mountains, from the snowpack, the spring runoff, the big storm events. Those waters are the ones that typically are not utilized through water rights. Because most water rights are based on an annual usage throughout the course of the year. And so you kind of have that steady demand. But in those peak conditions, you see really high volumes for two, three, four months of the year. So those are the times when we think water is available and water rights might be available to pull that excess that's coming from that spring runoff and then capture that in some fashion. And so that's where we think, even in the Snake, there may be some potential for water right availability.
And I can add just a little bit concerning water rights. During the adjudication, what they want to do is get the base of what water is being used, how much is there, and then they'll know if there's other available for additional water rights. So just because it's been adjudicated doesn't mean people would not be able to apply for future water rights. It just depends on what the supply is and, like Les explained, you know, it depends on when you're pulling it and how it affects other senior water right holders.
Well, there's one thing for certain, we do need to solve it.
Also, since the Palouse Basin has not been adjudicated, anything we try to do could be overruled. I mean, it's kind of premature. We can select a project like the Flanagan Creek where we're collecting water, but then it could be adjudicated that we don't have a right to keep that water.
And that's definitely part of the filling data gaps, is looking, as we look specifically and start to hone in, that'll be a whole process, identifying the legalities, the rights, the availability. What we don't want to do is get too far down that road, trot out a specific project and make the decision for the community. We don't want to come out when that's all been taken care of and we've already said, this is feasible, this isn't, and come out with a single solution and say, community, this is what's happening. Because the five times they've tried in the past to do this and it's failed, it's because that's how they've done it. They've come out with the one option that they've got so far down the road on that there's no deviating. And so we want to trot this out early and say, look, these are the options that appear to be feasible. What do you guys want to do? How do we do it? And then we'll start to refine those and define that further.
Now, it appears that the reuse piece is one that doesn't involve any water rights, and we certainly have that available to us. And if your numbers are correct, the U of I dropped their consumption by, went down 60% by reuse. If we do that with Pullman, if we do that with more reuse in Moscow, then we can probably make huge progress before these other adjudications happen, eh? We can do that less expensively and immediately.
Yeah.
Kevin, yeah.
Tyler, thank you for your presentation and to the members that have also joined you. I was just curious, for outreach, I'm sure that PIBAC's done this before, so do you outreach the high schools and get middle school students?
Yeah, you know, one of the things that we have on the agenda for our next meeting at PIBAC is just a really robust effort to identify everybody we can talk to. I mean, everybody we can talk to. And so we're going to break into groups and task groups with areas that they have to cover, and we're just going to generate the best list that we can, meeting times, contact information. I'm sure we'll be reaching out to all of you for ideas. We want to talk to everybody and figure out, and so any suggestions anybody has, we're completely open to because we really need to make this message heard as ubiquitously as possible.
Thank you, Tyler. Excellent report. Thank you. And thank you all, the folks from Pullman around that is helping with this terrific. Okay, we will move on to item number six, which is Phillips Farm Park Lease Agreement with Leito County. Dwight Curtis, you have the podium, sir?
Yeah, if I could, is this summit free?
Yes.
If you want to pay, we're willing to take some money, Dwight, so for refreshments, that'd be great, so...
Not only free, they got free heavy orders.
There you go. All right, well, thank you. Good evening, council and mayor. Tonight, we're looking for approval of a five-year lease agreement. It's a renewal with Leito County for the management and operations of the Phillips Farm Park. It's located just north of Moscow, 160-acre parkland. And the present lease expires at the end of this month. The new lease, it's a five-year lease, expire in October or September of 2022. Along with this would be an annual maintenance cost share of $5,000 a year, and that's something we presently do now as well. With that, this was reviewed by the city attorney, the contract, and this also was brought before the Parks and Recreation Commission, who recommended approval. Last week, we brought this before the Administrative Committee, who recommended approval. These last years where Leito County's been managing this park and the system, we've had no issues. I mean, they're really easy to work with. They keep us informed, bring us in when needed. They're doing a good job out there, and quite frankly, they've done some things out there that we probably couldn't have done, you know, if we had been managing that. And if you didn't already know, we have our second restroom in a year, and one of them is at this park. So with that, we would ask for your approval of this lease.
Okay, this was an Administrative Committee on the 28th.
It was. Yeah, we had a good discussion, and I was just looking at my notes. We ended up talking about the dogs. Remember the, because there were questions, people wanting more, like, thinking about a dog park, and we ended up giving some information about how people are using their dogs and controlling it, and the county looking over it. Do you remember? Would you kind of talk about that again?
Sure. Well, I mean, the contract, the lease agreement actually says that they must be leashed at all times. And just like most of our parks, it's always an issue, and especially that far out, they don't have a permanent residence there or a permanent presence. So it's even more likely that people are not going to have their dogs on leashes. So Andy's been looking at that, for years he's been looking at this. Andy Grant, they're Parks and Recreation Director. And they have no plans other than to just keep working on it. They have looked at or thought about possibly an off-leash area, bringing a proposal for that based on what we're already doing. I mean, if you can't beat them, you know, join them, kind of a thing, but have a designated area. But they've not put that to paper yet. They're just looking at ideas.
Walter, you got a question? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dwight, something I saw this evening, and I apologize, the leasie on this is Leito County.
Yes.
That's in the first paragraph. And then down in the document, paragraph eight or section eight calls for the plan to follow Exhibit A for a forest management plan?
Yes.
Okay. And if we go to Exhibit A, which was written in 1995...
It's old.
Still seems to be pertinent. The leasie is listed as Better Living Incorporated.
Well, good catch.
I wonder if we should not make a change in that.
We could do that. I guess we could. I guess that's a legal question.
Rod, you want to address that?
That lessee is, actually, the county's in their stead now in that agreement. They've taken their spot under the forest plan. It's whoever we're leasing it to is bound by that. And that would be the county.
But this lists Larek Astaber and Genesee.
Yes, they were the predecessors before that.
I know that, I understand that, but that's no longer the lessee.
No, but the forest management, we're not going to go manage or amend that contract or that management plan. It's addressed to how to manage it, and Leito County is to abide by this management plan. So there's, in the stead of the original lessee. We're still the lesser, and the lessee is bound by it.
I understand, but I'm not sure why we would list a lessee from 22 years ago if that's no longer the case, and particularly a phone number and address. Mr. Mayor, Gary has a comment?
Gary?
Yeah. Exhibit A is the management plan that was, came into place when Better Living Inc. and Inc. and Larek Astaber were leasing that property from the city. The management plan has not changed.
Agreed.
Management plan is the management plan. So we would either republish the management plan or make it an exhibit to the new contract, which is what we did in our previous contracts with Leittau County. Understand the confusion, but the management plan itself pertains to the property and is less, or Rod indicated, that Leittau County steps into Better Living Inc.'s position in that management plan.
And one other thing, Tom Lamar's name is misspelled on the signature line. I think I'm right about that one.
We got that from the county.
I don't, I don't think he's changed his name to that.
Yeah, I don't think so either. We'll, we'll correct that. That'll be easy to fix.
With that, Gina?
Yeah, Honored, I move that we approve a five-year lease agreement with Leittau County for the management of Phillips Farm Park as a county park, effective October 1, 2017, with an annual maintenance cost share of $5,000 and the edit to Mr. Lamar's name.
Okay, we got a motion by Gina, a second by Art, to approve the five-year lease agreement with Leittau County for the management of Phillips Farm Park as a county park, effective October 1, 2017, with an annual maintenance cost of share of $5,000 annually, plus a Tom Lamar correcting on his spelling. I'll take the roll, starting with John.
Aye.
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 And aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dwight. With that, we will move on to item, the next item, item number seven, Fee Resolution Exhibit Amendment. Gary, you reading that in the podium, sir?
Thank you, Your Honor. What you have before you is the Fee Resolution Exhibit Amendment. And this is, was a good catch, that in our original fee resolution of August 21st, our fee resolution typically takes place, the changes take effect October 1st, which is the beginning of the new fiscal year. In this case, there are several fees that don't take effect at the beginning of the fiscal year. Some of those are rack lease rates, fiber lease rates through our IS department. In addition, one of the new things you saw this year, as was talked about earlier tonight, was restructuring of farmers' market vendor fees. There was no intent that those vendor fees would take place on October 1st, meaning they would be effective the last three weeks of the 2017 market season. It was intended that those fee changes would take place during the 2018 season. So vendors for 2018 would know what those fees would be. So rather than create confusion, we'd like to reduce it. So what you have before you is a small amendment to the exhibit to the fee resolution, which merely states that these fees will take place for the 2018 market season. Again, making it official. Do not need to republish the resolution, but rather just the exhibit to the resolution in that singular instance. So that's what we're looking for, is council acceptance of that small change to the fee resolution.
Okay. Art? It seems to make sense in a cleanup sense, so I would move approval of the amendment to Resolution 2017-15 Exhibit A.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, a question first.
Okay, Walter.
Gary, were you saying that the, some IT rates would not be effective October 1?
Yeah, and it's contained within the current exhibit. It states when those would become effective.
So that one is correct?
Yes.
The original one was correct?
Yes.
Okay, we just didn't have the farmer's market?
Exactly.
Okay, got it.
Okay, another question before we call for a roll? Okay, the motion was made by Art, seconded by Gina, to approve the amendment to Resolution 2017-15 Exhibit A. I'll start the roll. Walter?
Aye.
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 Okay, we will move on to item number eight, which is Master Agreement for Services with the University of Idaho. Gary, you have that as well.
Thank you, Your Honor. What you have before you is our Master Emergency Services Agreement with the University of Idaho. We've had, we've provided emergency services, both in the form of police services, as well as fire services and ambulance services, dispatch services to the University of Idaho for many years. Medical, emergency medical services through our volunteer ambulance company. And that's taken place for many years under various agreements. There were, I think I've been privy to about six of those agreements over the years that I've been here. They've been in varying lengths, from two years to five years, dating back to the 60s, I believe. In 2010, the University of Idaho put out a request for qualifications and proposals for response to provide emergency, or excuse me, police services to the University of Idaho. With the council's authorization, we submitted a proposal. Because in order to provide those services, you had to have arrest authority. There were only three agencies that were able to provide those. That would be City Moscow, Leittau County, and the State Police. Leittau County and the State Police did not respond to the RFP. We responded, negotiated an agreement, and entered into an agreement with the University of Idaho dated 2011. That agreement lasted for an initial term of three years, expiring in 2013. It was extended by its own terms for one additional year, expiring then October 1 of 2014. Since that time, because of a change of administration at the University of Idaho and in their financial and administration department, we were in the midst of consolidating not only police services, but dispatch services and fire and emergency medical services into one agreement. I've been working on that for quite a few months. Recently, we came to an agreement that university council could agree with as well. What you see before you is that agreement. You'll see that it has a base amount calculated for FY 2018. And then it escalates at 3% per year for the succeeding two years for an initial three-year term, can then be renewed for one additional three-year term, at which point the two parties would have to get together and negotiate or renew separately. You'll see from the agreement that it spells out specifically the police services that are to be, to be provided. That would include services for commencement, services for football and basketball games, athletic events, VIP visits, so on and so forth, as well as additional records, discussions, and those sorts of things. You'll see a couple of acronyms in there. One of those is the Cleary Rule, or the Cleary, excuse me, Cleary Act, excuse me. So I've just pulled some information on that. The Cleary Act requires colleges and universities participating in federal student aid programs to disclose campus safety information and imposes certain basic requirements for handling incidents of sexual violence in emergency situations. So that regulates that information that would be available. Secondly, FERPA, which is a records, student records regulation, that if the student is under 18, parents have certain rights to student records. Once you reach the age of 18 or majority, then those records are subject to authorization for disclosure by the students. So those are two of the acts that our police and law enforcement need to be aware of, especially as acting in concert with the University of Idaho. So that's what that means. You also see fire services that are included in the agreement. We used to have in our budget, police services, fire, and EMS, and then for dispatch. So fire services are provided. We will provide standby, provide separately. You'll notice there are two, two services that are not included in the base rate that is in the agreement. One of those is for specialized services that the university requires or requests from the police for additional coverage. Secondly, would be for services that they require from the fire department for standby or specialized services. Lastly, of course, you have dispatch services, which are provided to the University of Idaho by the City of Moscow through our omnibus agreement with WITCOM. We pay WITCOM. We're in the midst of an agreement with WITCOM to provide emergency dispatch services for the City of Moscow. University of Idaho is included in that. We have fairly modern, or really modern, 911 services through WITCOM. And those would be provided as well through our agreement with WITCOM to the University of Idaho. So with that, after all of this diatribe about the services to be provided, if this is approved by the city council tonight, then it will then be presented by university council to the University of Idaho Board of Regents at their next meeting. And then we would have an agreement for three years with that one three-year term of renewal.
And this was approved and recommended by the Administrative Committee on August 28th?
And Gary gave the same presentation, and we had, and we went into depth and understood in that. I didn't see any issues. Walter, you had some questions tonight?
My questions have been addressed.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, and I appreciate that review of that. There were a couple of references to some different paragraphs in the document that weren't picked up by either the university or the city. So it was nice to get those clarified.
Okay. Gina?
Yeah, Honored, I move that we approve the attached master services agreement with the University of Idaho.
Second. I'll give it to John, I have time. Okay, we got a move by Gina and a second by John to approve the attached master service agreement with the University of Idaho. We'll start with you, Walter.
Aye.
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 Thank you, Gary. Well, moves forward with that. With that, that is the end of our meeting. So I will be taking reports. And I'll start with you, Jim.
It's going to be pretty easy, because we didn't have Public Works Finance this last week. And Farmer's Market did a much better job than I could have of reporting on what went on there today. So that's about all I got.
Aaron, Jim, excellent. Okay, Arthur?
Yeah, this very evening, the Moscow Tree Commission met and discussed several things, a lot of it to do with the downtown trees in Moscow, where lots and lots of people like downtown trees and would like to see them taken care of, and the aging out ones replaced with new ones in a sequential fashion. Also, the commission has put together a street tree guide on the species of trees that would work best for particular locations, given the height of power lines and the width of the tree lawns. And it's a good little brochure. It'll be coming out a little bit later this fall to assist people in selecting and maintaining their landscape. And that's what they were up to this time.
Plus a lot of other things, like pruning classes coming up in the spring, but that's later.
Okay, Walter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On August 24th, I attended the Historic Preservation Commission regular meeting. They are bringing to a conclusion their retractable commission banner that they've been designing. They've got 95-plus percent complete on having that ready to be printed. They'll use it when they have a Farmer's Market presentation later this year, this summer. They're working on updating their comp plan section and the, their historic preservation section in the comp plan. And worked out their citizen survey questions. I believe those have been submitted to administration. And they're continuing and getting closer to their Third Street interpretive signage we've talked about, where they will ultimately be assigned at City Hall, at the library, and at the 1912 building, with the 1912 building being the first one that they plan to try to get done. They've got a little bit more work to do on that one before it's ready to be put in the ground. On Wednesday the 30th, I was on a conference call for an hour and a half with Association of Idaho City's Municipal Water Uses Committee meeting. A lot of discussion, as usual, about the Snake River Basin and what they're trying to do to take care of themselves down there. One thing that came out of this was that the Palouse Basin adjudication has been pushed back to 2019. They said the main reason seemed to be that Idaho Department of Water Resources just doesn't have the resources and staff to be able to move on into this area until they get through with the Coeur d'Alene area. So it's going to push back a little bit. I noticed in a, in a, in a release today that John Rushee was just appointed by the governor to the IDWR board. I think that was new today. The former state representative. Let's see, what else on that? I believe that was most of the things that were covered there. Les McDonald and myself were asked today to participate in a new AIC Water Task Force on Water Reuse. So they're forming that to look at water reuse/recharge in the state of Idaho. So Les and I will be participating in that. There's a meeting in Boise on October 11 as a kickoff meeting that we will be attending. That's all I've got.
Okay, Catherine?
1912 Facilities Development Committee met them, they rejected all the bids for the roof, and that's going to go into the spring. And that's okay. They felt okay about that. And then they just talked about all the work that they've been doing, the Heart of the Arts have been doing to the building. And so far, they are funding 2017, they've raised $40,000 to date. And then I don't know if anybody had a chance to participate in the dime through time they had on August 25th. I wasn't able to. Did anybody else have a chance to go? Okay, so that was happening there. And then the other big thing is the sign. So they're starting, you'll see a mock-up. There's a, I was going to pass this around for you to see that they, they gave two, because you know, they're trying to do a mosaic. So the committee, they gave two choices. And the committee talked about kind of what they thought would work on that corner coming up. And so, trying to figure out, so at some point, you'll see a mock-up. And they're scaling it to see what they look like. And then they're going to take a feedback to see what people thought was easiest to recognize on that. So that's coming your way. So if you want to give feedback to the Heart of the Arts about what you think, that would be really good. So that's coming with them. And then the fire is having their anniversary on the 25th. And that's going to be during the fair, which is super exciting. And they talked about they have an obstacle course, the demonstration that the chief mentioned, the ceremonies at 11:00. They're serving burgers and hot dogs. There's going to be a hose competition. I think they're letting people, you know, try out the hose. And then they're also, they talked about how many more calls they have. So in 2015, they had had 1,300. In 2017, they're already at 1,442. So the amount of calls has been totally picking up. And then they had their softball game against the police. I don't know who won, though. Does anybody know?
Police.
The police won? Okay. And then the money went toward ATVP, which I thought was great. And they are requesting, if you're interested in volunteering, to please go to their Facebook page. And you can write them in there, because they're trying to get more volunteers of all kinds, you know, like maybe people with website information or all kinds of stuff. So they're, they're recruiting more community members. And then there was one more thing I got to do, and I can't remember right now. Oh, Parks and Rec. Parks and Rec was good. We have two seats vacant on Parks and Rec. Come hither and fill those seats.
Okay, Gina?
We had a cool presentation tonight for what the P-Back Committee has been doing. And I, I wanted to say, Dwight, earlier when he was offering his money, that we needed between 60 and 90 million. So if he would throw some money in, that'd be good. We also, the Pathways Commission worked on getting their questions for the citizen survey. And I think we've submitted those now. We had to narrow it down from like 30. So we did, I think we did a good job of narrowing it down. We also have that city ride coming up, 12th, 14th, 12th. I still can't remember what night it is, but I'll be there on my bike both nights. So I'll get a ride for, with the city. But it's a really nice, very, anybody can do it. New bicyclists such as me, or experienced ones such as-
Is that the 11th?
I think it's the 12th. Thank you, Art. Thanks for being a-
And it's only two miles.
And it's only two miles. So it won't hurt for a long time afterwards. But anyway, so there's been a lot going on. And again, we didn't have Public Works Finance last week either. So, thank you.
John?
I have a short one here. The only thing I've got is the Building Code Advisory Committee has been meeting once a week for the last number of months. And they're biting off the element, or the elephant, one bite at a time, instead of trying to take the whole elephant at once. And so we've gone through electrical, we've gone through water, we've gone through any number of things. And the best thing about it was that last week, we had the city picnic. So we didn't have a meeting.
Yeah.
And, but the committee's been doing a great job. They're just about down to the point where they can have a meeting and coalesce everything. And then it will probably go to, I imagine, the Administrative Committee, and then it'll come to this board. But they've done a great job. I imagine they will continue and some fairly thorough discussion over building codes, which, oh, that's interesting.
Okay, John, I got airport board meeting we had on the 30th, talked about a number of things, mainly that we could not secure these land agreement of Wazoo, because we found out they had land that they really didn't own, that they were going to try to sell us. Finally dawned on them. So more to come on that later, ladies and gentlemen. They will work through that as we go along. September 8th, we got the block party downtown, Vandal Block Party. It's Friday evening. It's going to be an absolute blast. So please come. And hopefully this smoke will blow out. I understand by Thursday. So I'm holding my feet to the fire, so to speak. Hope the smoke's gone. Gary, do you have anything for us?
Thank you, sir. We do have our monthly City University School District- Thank you, sir. We do have our monthly City, University, School District, Latah County luncheon tomorrow at University and Best Western at 12 o'clock. I know, Mayor, you have a stepping stones board meeting we'll be unable to attend. We also have at 7:00 AM on this Thursday, we have a meeting, joint meeting with the Moscow Urban Renewal Agency to talk about the status of the Urban Renewal Agency's strategic plan and their project list. And we will also be presenting on the City of Moscow's strategic plan and projects that are being pursued as well. We are in the process of moving forward with scoping of the police facilities and other city facilities, bringing that through. We tentatively set a workshop for next Monday after administrative committee. We're not sure that we will have documentation ready to go at that time, so I'll keep the mayor informed and let the council know whether that goes through or not. If not, it will likely be delayed two weeks unless we can find another more convenient time. So with that, we did have our employee appreciation picnic last Wednesday. Feedback from the employees is just excellent. Really appreciate having that ability to get together with their fellows and being able to interact with the city council that time. So it was a great time, and we really appreciate that as city employees. Thank you for that.
And Jim and Ben played excellent music.
Oh, yes, couldn't, it was great.
I just had a question. On the meeting Thursday morning, are we going to have documentation come to us before the meeting?
I'm, I believe that packets have been sent. I will check and make sure that, I don't know if.
We got it from URA, Gary.
Yes.
I don't remember. We didn't get anything from the city, but that may be okay.
Yeah.
His agenda came from URA.
Okay, thanks. I just, because it's that morning meeting, so I just wanted to have read it before we got there.
Yeah, the city, the city's part, the strategic planning update will be in our PowerPoint presentation, so there were no backup materials.
Laurie to the Senate.
Thank you. Thank you, Laurie.
Okay, anything else, Gary?
No, sir. Thank you very much.
I would look for adjournment. Adjourn. All in favor. Close, close to 8:43. Thank you very much.
Hey, Mr. Mayor.